Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Time is nine oh one. Let's open the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ed, can you call roll, please? Commissioner Reagan.
Present.
Commissioner Brand.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Okay, we have some. Um, start with the, uh, let's just go through them, Stephen.
Sure.
So for the Board of Health, they were, they had a meeting scheduled for last Thursday that got canceled, so I, we don't have any updates or recommendations from the Board of Health. Civic Center Authority Board, we still have one opening. We do have one potential candidate, um, but we haven't made any final decisions there. On Creed Board, um, we appointed two new Creed Board members, uh, a few months ago, uh, Bill Walters and Brian Sapp, and we need to appoint an interim. So Dan Allen is the representative from the local utility. That's the water company. He's unable to attend for personal reasons, and we, he has recommended that we appoint Jim Henderson in the interim, and then Jim Henderson will look for a more permanent replacement. So I would make a motion to, uh, appoint Jim Henderson from the Indiana American Water Company to the Creed Board.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Commissioner, Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Sherry, do you have anything, update on the Fair Board?
I do not, but we, uh, Mr. Johnson has put online an application for any of our boards, and we're looking for people who have maybe business experience and, um, other board experience, but, um, I do not have anything for the Fair Board.
All right, um, we'll go to the table business solar moratorium.
I'll make a motion, take it off the table.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
So the Planning Commission met last week and reviewed, uh, a number of corrections. A lot of it was syntax, punctuation, spelling, some grammar, missing words, things like that. Um, at the end of the night, the amendments were recommended to come back to the Commissioners. I believe it was eight to one was the, was the final vote. I know the Planning Commission and legal are working on updating that. I don't know if it'll be ready for our September second meeting or not, but that's.
I, I would like to, I would like to make a recommendation that, um, obviously the second's on a Tuesday. It's not a regular, I mean, it is a regular Commissioner meeting, but it has to be moved due to the holiday. Let's hear, do, do you feel like the, all the solar information be ready by the fifteenth? Danielle, you think that'd give you enough time as well to, to look at it? So I, I would like just for public knowledge to, to set that date, September fifteenth, to hear that solar ordinance amendment. Are you guys okay with that?
I am.
Yes.
Make a motion to put it back on the table.
Second.
We have a motion to put that back on the table in a second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Um, we have the IU Health Master Agreement. Um, we do have a meeting scheduled this week, a tour scheduled this week with Marathon. Um, Pam, do you, do you have anything else to add to that?
No.
Okay.
We're still waiting on IU Health to give us a response, right, on the fee-for-service proposal? Pam, that's a question. Okay.
Okay, we'll go to, um, the Yorktown land Gordon Cox and Julie Baring issue. I'd entertain a motion to remove that from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Ed, could you call a roll, please? Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Julie Baring, thirty-four-ten West Fox Ridge Lane. After looking at it, uh, we really don't need that lot back. Really, the only thing that we need is access to six hundred. So if we could leave that lot there for hopefully doing a fire station emergency response at some point in time, if we could go just a little north of that lot and get an easement through there to six hundred, that's all we need. We just need access to six hundred. Cause that was the original intention of doing all that, and I don't know how that forty foot and all that stuff came fruition. We didn't know about it until we got the survey.
I believe we'll need another survey for that entrance, though. Is that correct?
We're willing to get actions involved and get the easement written up and get it to you to review.
Okay.
Perfect.
What's the width of the easement you're looking for?
We were looking at maybe a hundred foot. Since we have a hundred and nine acres there, we could see two, probably at least two frontage roads through there with the back being maybe residential, industrial, and the, and the front being commercial.
Will you be prepared in two weeks to bring this back up?
Sure.
September second?
I will let you, it depends on the survey, the legal. It's kind of out of my hands, but I will push for that. If I can't be here, I will let you know exactly when I will have it ready.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to put that back on the table.
Second.
A motion to put that back on the table in a second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have the, uh, BW Facility Maintenance Agreement.
No update.
Any reason to take that off? Okay.
Not for me.
Move on to the approval of the minutes for the Commissioner meeting, August fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve those minutes in a second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Next, we have presentations to the Commissioners. It's the, uh, two thousand and twenty-six CHIR P. Grant, Mr. Johnson, Sheriff's Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tony Johnson, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. Yeah, this is an update on our CHIRP grant, the Highway Injury Reduction Grant that we've been doing for the past, uh, two years. Uh, we were given an approval letter for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, which starts, uh, Sep-, or October of this coming year. It runs October to September. So we were granted for that a hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars for the grant for this next fiscal year, which should, uh, equate to roughly sixteen hundred hours of additional patrol for Delaware County streets and highways.
That'll make a little dent.
It'll, it, it does something, that's for sure. We've seen a lot of, uh, I get, I get reports and summaries from, uh, the Criminal Justice Institute, and, you know, they pay attention to our traffic fatalities, uh, and accidents, and we have seen a decrease in that, and they attributed it to this, uh, what they call high visibl-, high visibility enforcement effort this is grant gives us.
We appreciate all your work and all the, all the deputies that are out there taking care of us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next, we have a Doc's Pop, uh, presentation from Pam Cammon.
Uh, on the Doc's Pops, we have used that before. Um, so I called them the other day, and I am on like a con-, complimentary login where it doesn't cost me, and, uh, I put Lee on it. She will get six, six, uh, referrals or, um, logins free, and if she goes over, they gave us a fifty percent discount on the old range. But, uh, that's six jobs a month, and we don't, we don't really go through that many.
So these are, these are background checks you can perform?
That's right, yes.
These are background checks that the HR department can perform on potential applicants?
Right, yeah, I should have explained that.
Yes.
Um, and then, um, I don't even know what I was gonna say. But, I mean, we've used this before. Oh, it's in only Indiana.
Okay.
Only Indiana. I think Danielle checked into, um, the Indiana, you want to re-
Sure. So, well, I just sent her what we use at our office, and so we have the, um, pre-employment consent to do the background check that we have them fill out, and then we send them off to the state police. I think it was like twelve dollars and sixty cents, maybe, right around thirteen dollars per check. So I gave them the information on what we use.
I don't know if we want to spend that much on the background check. Does it go outside of Indiana? Okay. When Doc's Pops is pretty much free, but it doesn't go outside of Indiana. Do we want to table this?
I'll be honest with you. I think we need to, um, it needs to be done outside of Indiana, too.
Okay, well, I was thinking, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, I agree. And if there's a, if there's a state police, um, source that can do this and it costs thirteen dollars, I think it's worth the money.
Okay, that's fine. And we don't do that many background checks.
Yeah.
We don't do background checks on every single hire?
We do, but we are going to my case also, mycase.com.
Gotcha.
Yes. Yeah, we do on every single hire.
Yeah, I agree, because I, I don't remember, I think it's, my case doesn't include all ninety-two counties.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
It's very limited.
There are a few counties in Indiana, but we need to go outside Indiana. We've had a couple situations.
Just like, let's, let's, um, put into our policy that to use the state police.
That is fine.
And, and pay the thirteen dollars.
Danielle, get with us, and we'll do it, get them signed up.
So Section two point two one of the handbook calls out where we'll do those criminal background checks. We just need to update that with this detail.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Safe Routes to School Mini Grant. Uh, Mr. Bain.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jamie Bain, Health Department Administrator. Uh, you guys should have received my email last week, uh, in reference to the Safe Routes to School Grant that our office intends to apply for. Um, this morning, I sent you the current status of our grant application with all of the supporting documents. Um, we're still waiting to hear back from the granting agency on some information we need for that, uh, county prescribed form that has to be filled out as part of a grant application. Once I have that to you, I'll resubmit everything to you guys for, uh, your review and approval. Um, the grant application is due this Friday, however. We found out about it a couple of weeks ago. Um, my staff kind of got started on the process. Last week, they hit the ground running to make sure we could get an application in, um, and had that completed on Friday. Uh, this would fund us with twenty thousand dollars i- if we receive it, of course, um, for bicycle safety, bicycle rodeo program for the county. Would involve, uh, two events for Muncie Schools, one event for each of the other school corporations, and then two basic community-wide events. They would be doing, uh, bicycle safety checks, helmet checks, um, providing helmets, and we would also be providing bikes as, um, kind of a draw, as like a door prize draw at each of the events. Um, happy to answer any questions you guys may have about that.
That like after-school event or evening event or?
Yeah, we, we would try to coincide it with, um, health fairs or other events if possible. Otherwise, it would just be a standalone sometime after school or on a weekend.
Okay.
Great idea.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, you're, you're asking us for a letter of support. It's due this Friday, but you're still waiting on a response from the grantor?
Yeah.
For information so you can update the forms?
Yeah. The local forms require like a CFDA number and some information that we could not find on their general website, so we've contacted them to get that info to complete those forms.
Okay. So you're asking us for, what, what action are you asking us for? A letter of support?
We need a letter of support, and recognizing that this is due on Friday, uh, if we could have your approval prior to the submission of those forms, that would be appreciated.
Gotcha. I'd make a motion to provide a letter of support and approve this to be submitted by Friday pending the information. So you're still gonna give us, show us the updated forms before Friday, right?
If I can get the answer before Friday.
All right.
I can tell you that there's no, uh, of course, this is just me speaking here, but there's none of the questionable things like, uh, matching, um, nothing financial other than it just being a grant to support the program that we're, um, requesting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Okay, next you have the, um, Health Department Partnership Contract with Ball State.
Yes. Commissioners, you should have received two contracts from us. These were the, uh, under the Health First Indiana funding. As you're aware, we issue partnership funding to accomplish certain things in the community, um, one of which is a partnership with Ball State, uh, the School of Nursing. Uh, I believe the professor's name is Dr. Jane Anne Youngo, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. She's proposed for the creation and implementation of an intimate partner violence intervention program for the community. It would involve the creation of the program, training of local medical professionals, and, uh, evaluation of the program afterwards. Basically, it's, it's looking at training medical professionals on a number of things that they can do in their normal appointments with a pregnant or postpartum mother, uh, to screen for intimate partner violence and put them into, uh, contact with where they can get some help on that. Um, the intention is for this program to be self-sustaining afterwards, that once it's created, that the Ball State School of Nursing would be able to maintain it going forward, training medical professionals in the future as well.
Are there any questions about this agreement?
The ten thousand helps them get it started.
Yes.
Then they can find the other money. Sounds like a great program.
Who prepared this agreement?
Uh, I did.
You did. Okay. Danielle, have you had a chance to?
No.
Okay. Then I would make a motion to approve it, uh, pending the, uh, review and approval of the Commissioners' legal counsel.
And that has been reviewed and approved by Ball State as well already. Okay, thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for this agreement. Roll call, please. Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Next is a, uh, partnership agreement with the Health Department and High Tech Crimes Unit.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Zimmers and, uh, Chris Swanson prepared an application for Health First Indiana Funding yet again for support of the High Tech Crimes Unit. Um, I believe Mr. Zimmers is here to speak on behalf of them, uh, for any details you may have, you may be seeking on that. Chuck?
Any specific, specific questions, gentlemen?
You might want to explain to the public just what your new unit's doing.
Sure.
Great news.
My name's Chuck Zimmers. I'm the Director of the Delaware County High Tech Crimes Unit. Um, we cover eleven counties and provide, uh, digital forensics expertise to all those counties, um, take submissions from any law enforcement entity in those counties, state, local, federal. Um, this grant, the aim of this particular funding is to, uh, stand up our internship, uh, our intern processing area center. Uh, we need, uh, computers and the equipment. Uh, we're looking at creating a server that they can process, uh, digital data, uh, on virtual machines. So if something goes wrong and it crashes that computer, it doesn't really hurt anything. Um, it's a new plan for us to do that, but a machine that will handle that is quite costly, and we can't afford that, uh, out of our standard funding, but, uh, we currently have three interns looking to grow that, uh, add three more, and our interns stay with us. The plan is for, uh, three years, we seek sophomores so we can get them trained, certified. The three interns we have now are certified in our analytical tool, which is great. Um, and as we increase adding interns, currently they're within the HTCU proper, um, it's not really conducive for them to come in and out as they will. They don't have, uh, key to access because of the secure nature, but they'll be in an area, um, down the hall from that where they can access that pretty much whenever they're available. As college students, their schedules are kind of all over the place, so, um, they'll be able to come in and do their work during, whenever they're available, when we can move them down the hall. Uh, they are sworn investigators, uh, through the Prosecutor's Office. That's where they, uh, get their legal, their law enforcement powers. So, uh, it's a great experience for them, and they are really adding to the amount of work that we can process.
So this thirty-five thousand dollars is to purchase a server and install, implement?
The server and the supporting, getting our network down to that, um, and all the peripherals just to keep it running properly. Um, the space, we're not gonna do much to improve the space. It's just gonna put some desks in there, move them down there. Uh, we will have to put some security measures in place. It won't be the way as secure as the HTCU is, but, uh, the nature, they're just gonna have data on computers. There won't be evidence down there or anything like that, so.
Kind of puts their foot in the door.
Right. Uh, the whole goal is to, as we add the interns, we get their production, but we also, a lot of the jobs in this field request two, three years of experience, and our goal is to provide that to them. Um, so when they leave, they have that and can walk right into a career.
Is our IT installing this, or do you have someone from the outside doing this work?
We will handle it ourselves.
Okay.
Um, if we need any outside assistance, uh, we'll probably contract with Ryan Stoltz's company, uh, where he does some side work. He's done work at the fairground.
Yep.
I imagine we can get it handled.
Yeah. Okay. And Jamie, I would assume the same answer here. You prepared this, right? So we would need to give Danielle time to approve this.
I move we don't.
I'll amend that motion. Move, move to a, approve pending review and approval by our legal counsel.
Thank you.
One second.
You, you second?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please. Commissioner Brand.
Yeah.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have sixty-eight-fifty South Counter Ground four seventy-five East.
Yep. So this is, uh, a property that is owned by the Commissioners. It's out by the reservoir, and I think that we maybe had some radio equipment out there at one time, a tower, but we still have a meter, and we're still getting billed for this. But we haven't used this location or this meter for, I don't know how long.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm bringing it before the Commissioners. I would like to end this service and stop paying this bill.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes, and you'll reach out to AP to get that removed?
Correct.
Okay.
Next, we have, uh, Universal Roofing Contract.
Yes, uh, this is the, the little cabin called the Heel Cabin out at the fairgrounds. It was given to the fairgrounds years ago, and now it needs a new roof, and for twelve thousand dollars, five, twelve thousand five hundred, this universal roofing exteriors, they are gonna do it like the old shake shingles. So it's right there on Minutrista Boulevard, and so, so glad that we decided to use our EDA money.
Any questions?
This is a Delaware County-based company, just for everyone's information.
We did have two quotes, and this was the best quote for the money.
Make a motion to approve the contract to Universal Roofing Exteriors for twelve thousand five hundred dollars, sixty-two hundred and fifty down, uh, before they start the job, and sixty-two fifty on final balance upon completion.
I don't believe we can put money down. Can we, Ed?
No.
Yeah, it'll have to be.
So that's the way their contract reads.
Upon completion. We don't, the county never puts money down.
Okay. So, good to know. Did I make a motion to, well, or do you want to go back and talk to them?
Well, maybe we better table it.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Have a motion to table this in a second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have Delaware County Bridge Number One Twelve LPA Contract. Commissioner Brand?
Yep. So the local, uh, public agency agreement you have in front of you is for RQAW. Um, this is for Bridge One Twelve, which is, um, I think it's County Road six hundred south over Williams Creek.
Correct.
Uh, this is a project, uh, with eighty-twenty money, so the federal match would be a hundred twenty-four thousand. Our local match would be thirty-one thousand. Uh, YNDOT would let this in the beginning of October, October eighth. Uh, the bridge would be closed approximately, um, May fourth next year, and the contractor would be allowed a hundred and thirty-five calendar days, and the completion date's estimated to be next October thirtieth, right before Halloween. So this is for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They submitted an original estimate, and we went back and worked with them and got them, uh, got them down to what we originally forecasted. So this is in line with the original, the original assumption.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to approve this LPA contract in a second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Next, we have Jeff Howe.
So I'll talk about this today.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So in our, um, meeting back in June, we approved an interlocal agreement with the Muncie Redevelopment Commission for properties that are in the deed sale, and what we said in that meeting was that Delaware County Redevelopment Commission would have first right of refusal if we wanted to pull anything out of the deed sale. Muncie Redevelopment Commission, second, and then if any of the incorporated territories Albany or Gaston or Eaton or Daleville, uh, wanted some, we would let them have them. So the Redevelopment Commission has come and asked for ten properties. They're on the backside of the requests that you have. Um, just going down through these properties, doing a little bit of research. Um, these properties have been through the sale multiple times before. As an example, the sixth one on your list, five fifty-seven West Wilson Street, my research shows that that's been through the deed sale twelve times. Uh, the leased amount, uh, were twelve twenty-five West Kilgore and four twelve South Pond at four times. So MRC's requesting that we pull these ten out and move them over to the Redevelopment Commission rather than paying the money and running them through the deed sale.
We'll move.
I'll second. A motion to approve the requests in a second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Uh, we have the, uh, engineering agreement with VS Engineering. Mr. Brand?
Yeah, so this is a, a stormwater, uh, agreement. They basically help us when they review, uh, stormwater applications. We're working on amending the, uh, the ordinance and, and the pond ordinance, and there was fifteen thousand dollars in there for this year, and we've exhausted that. So this would be an amendment to the two thousand and twenty-five amount to move it up from fifteen thousand dollars to eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. So to add twenty-five hundred dollars to the twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five calendar year, and to also amend to make next year, two thousand and twenty-six, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to match what we're gonna consume this year.
Any questions?
It's been fifteen for some time, so.
It hasn't been for a long time.
Yeah.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So move.
Second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Uh, we don't have any ordinances this meeting. We'll go to Resolutions for Approval, Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one one, Resolution of Delaware County Board of Commissioners, Moving the Position of Delaware County Highway Engineer from the Annual Appointment List.
So this is similar to one that was done last year for the Project Director Administrator, uh, basically removing this from our annual appointment list. The count, this would remove the county engineer position from the annual appointment list. And while we're talking about it, we're really close. I believe we'll be extending an offer today to the county engineer candidate. Last Friday, the county engineer candidate met with who would be his coworkers and, uh, got some positive feedback there.
Move we approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve in a second, but I want to state this, and I've stated all along. That whole list should be removed from appointment list, in my opinion.
Yeah, I kind of was thinking about that.
The whole, the whole list, we, that needs removed. It shouldn't be, their job shouldn't be based off of. It shouldn't be, their job shouldn't be based off of any kind of political affiliation or anything. Should be, should be removed. Roll call please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next we have, uh, department heads, elected officials. Go ahead Pam.
Uh, Pam McCammon, HR Director. I'm gonna read, read what I wrote. It came from the heart, but I have to read this. I don't want to forget what I wanted to say. And I want to say after twenty-two years of service with Delaware County, I respectfully submit my retirement as requested by the commissioners. While this is a difficult step to take, I want to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunities I have had throughout the, my career in county government. I would especially like to thank Jimmy Saint Meyer and Jack Stonebreaker, which Jack is no longer with us, but, uh, who first gave me the chance to work as a government worker. Their support opened the door to many rewarding careers, a career and allowed me to grow both personally and professionally. Over the years, I've had the privilege of working alongside many dedicated colleagues and meeting countless wonderful people. I am also grateful to have worked under the leadership of several commissioners who guidance, guidance and vision made my service meaningful. I leave this position with the appreciation for the experiences I have gained and the relationships I have built. It has been an honor to serve Delaware County and I will meet with the commissioners after this meeting, I hope, on my final day.
Thank you. Appreciate all of Pam's service to the county. Um, it's, she's been here a long time. Real, real quick, um, do we need to approve this appointment agreement? I think we do, yeah. Let, let's, let's go back to that real quick. You, you kind of briefly brought it up.
Yep, so we have an employ, an employment agreement in front of us for the county engineer. And, uh, the salary for that county engineer would be, um, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the funds are pulled from multiple places. One place it's pulled from is the salary line, which was previously the project director administrator. I believe that salary line is sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Um, there would also be a forty thousand dollar grant in aid subsidy coming from the state. Once our county auditor certifies that this county engineer is indeed a degreed engineer. Uh, the candidate that we're gonna extend the offer to is a civil engineer. Then we would get a grant in aid subsidy reimbursement from the state of forty thousand dollars and the balance would come from edit. The commissioners, if you recall in the meeting where we approved the edit, I read off all the lines and there is a, a line in there to support the county engineer, uh, for the next three years.
So I entertain a motion to approve this employment agreement.
So move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes, thank you. All right, we'll go back, um, Kylene?
Good morning, Commissioners, Kylene Swackham, our Plan Commission. I just wanted to report that we did receive our final version of our ADA transition plan. Um, so I wanted to provide, provide you with that. Um, also just report that I have turned in this and all the documentation to NDOT and that's required. Um, I did copy Mrs. Struble on that, on those emails, so she should have those as well. But I just wanted to provide you with this. We are getting everything updated on the website. Um, and as far as, um, the people that worked on this, I just want to say thank you for everybody that contributed um, so that we could get this done in a timely manner. And, uh, thank you very much to American Structure Point who completed the document and the Community Foundation and Ball Brothers Foundation who provided, um, grants for this as well.
And we appreciate all your hard work.
Absolutely, you spearheaded it and we appreciate all your work on that.
Well done.
We were getting federal subsidies for this or matching money to, to help pay for it? Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a test?
Jamie? Good morning yet again, Commissioners. Um, wanted to bring to your attention, I know your office has received a number of questions, uh, especially recently over our food permits, the different categories of food permit, who's eligible for what, what scenario, a certain permit would be valid in. We are working on a series of handouts, some, some guidance documents that would, uh, better lay out all the information that we can provide to you guys to help improve your understanding, that you could then provide to the public. Of course, in the meantime and at any point even after, uh, you're welcome to simply refer them to our office to ask to speak with someone in the Food Safety Division. Um, the confusion comes in, uh, we have our retail permits, which are for the brick and mortar establishments, but then we have mobile permits and temporary permits that are valid for the food trucks and the food tents and, uh, the requirements of what, when and where each of those permits is valid and the requirements that are set forth along with those permits. So it's, it, it, there was nothing cut and dry that I can just tell you right now. Uh, it's, there's a lot of if this, then this type of, uh, type of wording that'll have to come into play. Happy to answer any specific questions you may have though.
I'll be honest, I haven't had any, uh, food problems permits, but I have had quite a few weed problems. And I was talking to, yes, Dr. Daniel, that weed just, tall weeds are just getting out of hand. And, um, I believe you just have one guy that goes around the whole county and, um, works on, when he gets a call. Cause is it the Board of Health that signs someone to cut their grass or is it the, um, file chart inspector?
Well, we have had a longstanding ordinance in Delaware County for high weeds that directs the Health Department. However, it also goes on to say that we will cut the grass, that we will put liens on properties. Uh, and as you mentioned, we have one individual currently, one full-time that handles all of our tattoo inspections, handles all of our housing complaints, which would include the tall weed complaints and overseas environmental programs. So we are not in a position to take additional action against the tall weed complaints. We do notify property owners of the complaint. We do, uh, seek a resolution, but when it comes down to the enforcement arm, that's where we're lacking. So I believe it has been brought up to Commissioner Brand and Commissioner Henry previously seeking some discussion on.
So we, we have, Danielle and I have sat down to talk about it. She has some notes and I, I know she's very busy right now, but as soon as time allows, we will rewrite that ordinance and, um, get something that we can, um, you, we ha, we have, uh, mowers on contract, but we'll get something in the, the ordinance to state that we'll hire the mowers to go out and mow once you guys serve. And I also want to say Jeremy does a fantastic job for you guys.
Yes, he does.
And he, he's, he comes to, I'm, I'm always in a lot of meetings with him and he does a tremendous job and, and, um, he, he, he's a great guy to, to work with. I just want to say that.
I'll pass that along to him.
Well, that's good news. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, VSO Brian Wilson. Uh, I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention that the Delaware County Veterans Stand Down will be September sixteenth from ten to two. Uh, our office will be shut down that day. Uh, and also we are doing the guard duty on Flags of Honor again this year, be the ninth and tenth of September as well. And that's all I have for the public for today.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Any other department heads or elected officials? Okay, we have the, uh, payment of claims of four million seven hundred thousand seventy dollars, four and three, wait a minute. Four million seven hundred seventy thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
So move.
At second. Thank you.
Let's talk about some of that.
Yep, I agree. So, uh, there's an animal shelter allocation on here, seventy-five thousand dollars. That comes in two parts. The county, um, helps support that animal shelter that's out on Regan Road to the tune of a total of a hundred and fifty thousand. So this is one of the annual, one of the semi-annual installments. Uh, we had, I think, six invoices from the Youth Opportunity Center, uh, quite a bit of latency there. I will be reaching out to them and see if they can get these to us in a more timely manner. Uh, that totals two hundred and sixty thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. I don't know why there's such a latency. Uh, our total edit in this claim was two hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty cents. Uh, we also had approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in credit card claims. Uh, again, no explanations, not a single explanation. And I will continue to not agree to approve the claims until we get explanations on these claims. Um, there were some tax sale things on there. Uh, I think this is what Commissioner Henry was mentioning a minute ago. There were some pretty big claims on two different sections. Um, I don't have the claims in front of me.
They were huge.
They were, they were listed, Ed, maybe you can explain. They were listed as a tax sales surplus on a particular, a particular one page. Yes, it was, uh, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Sure.
Could you, could you kind of explain that?
Sure, so it's surplus is what's paid when the, uh, winning bidder wins. It's up and beyond what the taxes are due. So it goes into a fund and then when it's, uh, paid off, essentially to get that money back. So that's, that's the reason this amounts to, I mean, it could be in the millions of dollars, so.
Yeah, it was high, okay, thank you. So, so we take that money in and then we hold it and it collects interest during that time?
Yeah, so the, the person who owns the property, that's part of their penalty. So it's five percent interest plus a ten percent, uh, penalty. So that's, those are the costs for someone who doesn't pay the taxes on that.
Gotcha.
So that's, they're gonna be paying five percent on that hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, so there's roughly between the hundred and eighty-seven that Commissioner Henry mentioned and then on another page, there's about two hundred thousand, so roughly four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Also our lit, uh, shared distributions were in this, uh, in these claims. So the certified shares was one point three three seven million. Public safety lit was five hundred and fifty-seven thousand and the edit, uh, was eight hundred and ninety-one thousand. That's, that's all for me, thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Uh, we didn't have any ARP claims this time. We have payment of payroll of one million twenty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
So move.
Second.
A motion to pay the payroll in a second, roll call please.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes. Next we'll go to, uh, public comment. You have three minutes, uh, for your public comment. We will start with Cheryl Swingly.
Good morning, Cheryl Swingly, Delaware County. I ask that you make two amendments to the utility solar ordinance you are expected to vote on during your, uh, meeting in mid-September. First, you need to remove the property value, uh, guarantee. Secondly, you need to change setbacks from five hundred to two hundred and fifty feet. If you don't make these two changes, you will effectively interfere with our farmers' property rights as well as prevent them from stabilizing their incomes as a result of tariffs and crop losses happening more often because of changing climate. Besides denying farmers' income, you are overlooking income that would help to offset recent state budget cuts to the county, which brings me to a realistic comparison of Randolph and Delaware Counties. The point is that Randolph County officials have figured out a way to supplement their budgets. On the other hand, in Delaware County, officials are on the path to cut services and maybe close the county building instead of looking for additional revenue sources to maintain the operations of the county. Utility solar isn't the solution to all our money problems, but utility solar can generate far more revenue from property tax money and economic development money if creatively configured as Randolph County officials have done. And that, this would exceed corn and soybean income. And I have a couple of observations from the August twelfth Plan Commission meeting. After Michelle Owens was stopped from making a motion about setbacks because President Chris Smith didn't entertain a response from her after Commissioner Brand objected, no member of the commission bothered to speak up after that. Why the silence? The only thing achieved during the meeting were edits and of the poorly written solar ordinance, which was a waste of everyone's time. In addition, nothing was said about property value guarantees, even though proponents of the ordinance brought it up three or four times. Let me remind you that you paid a consultant to tell you to take out the property value guarantee language in the last solar ordinance. And worst of all, not one of the Plan Commission members acknowledged the carpenter union members who spoke about the good paying jobs utility solar provides them. The Republican Party overall is known to reject unions. And on August twelfth, I saw union workers from our community disrespected by being ignored. County leaders also have shown us by their actions that they don't have any respect for the nine-member citizen solar study committee. In the future, why would any citizen with expertise take their time to advise you? Which in the case of solar resulted in a compromise that was designed to work for Delaware County. You have about a month to figure out how you can work for the good of all of Delaware County. You will either move the county forward or communicate that it's closed for business because of how you have treated our farmers and utility solar companies by changing the rules of the game for the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Johnson?
Hello, my name is Mike Johnson and I live at one-one-seven-zero-one North County Road, two hundred West Muncie. I want to thank the Planning Commission, uh, last week, yeah, it was a four-hour Planning Commission meeting. And I want to thank the, uh, county commissioners for the work that they put into the solar ordinance. Um, I believe that we do need to keep the property value guarantee in place and I do believe that we need to keep the setbacks in place. I think it's a good ordinance. I think it's well-written and I think it should move, move forward for your consideration and approval. Thank you.
Tim Carter?
Tim Carter, uh, eight-eight-two-zero, North County Road, twenty-five west. So I want to thank you first for, uh, all the hard work that you've done on the ordinance. No ordinance is ever gonna be perfect, it's always a series of compromises. Um, you know, there's a lot of talk about the old ordinance versus the new one. We have learned a lot in the last three years about solar, uh, and hence the reason why new ordinance needed to be drafted, right? Uh, I know the previous group worked really hard on it, but we've learned a lot in the last three years and those things had to be addressed. Uh, to that end, I'm also going to talk to you just briefly today about, uh, pure tone noise. So I'm playing pure tone noise right now. This was recorded off of a front porch, uh, in Connecticut. Uh, you can hear the crickets, sounds like the night and you can hear that noise in the background. That's pure tone noise. It's not loud, so it does not violate any current ordinances there or here. But that is what they heard when they turned on solar in Connecticut, Michigan, Florida, Louisiana. And these people have to live with this day and night, non-stop, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year. Uh, it doesn't go away and it really has serious health consequences and things like that. I'm not asking you to put this in the current ordinance. I'm, and I'm not, I don't mean this in an aggressive way, I'm not trying to warn you, but all of the county commissioners in these other places had no idea that this existed and was an issue. And they are all scrambling now to try to figure out how to deal with this because it is insidious and is causing serious problems. I am simply suggesting that you have some time. You might want to reach out to your counterparts in other counties. Um, some of that information has already been emailed to you. A little bit more contact information will be emailed to you. Do your own research, contact folks, find out from the other county commissioners, is this a big deal? Is it not a big deal? What's the best way to deal with it? Just because if it's as bad as it is in Connecticut and some of these other places, solar's not gonna end and you're gonna have to deal with it again once this happens, right? So that's all I'm doing is just providing more information because we know more, we can do better. Um, and you'll have information and then, uh, as I turn this off, um, I think everybody kind of will feel a little better because it's super annoying. Super annoying, right? Um, and so just do some research and find out whether that's something that we need to do. It's not expensive, it's just about where to put the transformer so they're not in somebody's front yard. But the solar companies don't really care about that, right? Because they're gonna try to put it on the edge of the road because that's the most convenient, cost-effective way to put it and I respect that. But when it causes a problem like this, if we can just have them put it a little bit further away, shouldn't really change anything. But after the fact, you can't make those changes, right? So, uh, just to provide you guys some information, do with it as you see fit. I appreciate everything you guys are doing, I know it's been a rough road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Arrington?
Thank you, Sue Arrington, thirty-two hundred West Brook Drive. Um, I agree with Cheryl Swingly that the, um, five hundred foot setback should be changed to two hundred fifty feet, uh, which is the state default setback. Um, but I want to spend most of my three minutes on the property value guarantee. I read it, it seems very vague to me. I think there are, um, somebody, the Plan Commission, which didn't have any comments in their, in their meeting about it. or you all, about what that really means. Because this is uncharted territory. The consultant that was hired back in 2022 recommended that it be deleted. It's still there. But let me, I looked, read it and it says it shall be valid for 12 months. Only be valid for 12 months after construction is complete. So I assume that means that if somebody sells their property while construction is going on, there will be no property value guarantee for that landowner. Or if it's 12 months and a day when the property is sold, that property won't have a guarantee. So that's one question I have. What's the point of this 12 months? Is it to get people adjusted to the fact that it's probably not going to make any difference? Or is it something that it's going to be a moving target? That after the first 12 months are over, will there be a second 12 months? What's going to happen with that? Secondly, when does this appraisal occur? Is it at the time that the contracts are sold or are signed? And who pays for the appraisal? I guess, it doesn't say. I guess people are assuming it's going to be the solar company. But what kinds of exclamations, exclamations is the public going to get on this? The other question is, what if something happens to the property? There's a natural disaster, the house loses its roof and it's not replaced and then it's sold. So is the solar company going to have to pay for that kind of property devaluation? Something that's totally out of their control, nothing they had to do with. And what if the land property goes up? Is the landowner going to share part of that increase with the solar company?
That's your time. Thank you.
I do have one thing. It's not about this. And that's a question about, has the Baker-Tilly meeting been set yet?
They still don't have the parcel level detail. As soon as they get the parcel level detail on how that will impact the revenues coming to Delaware County, we will set that and it will be a public meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan Berry?
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Dan Berry. I live at 2901 East County Road, 800 North in Eaton. The current ordinance that you will receive back from the Plan Commission is a very restrictive ordinance compared to the original ordinance. The original ordinance was developed by a nine-person study group that donated their time and energy to make the requirements for the ordinance. The new ordinance showed up out of the blue. Nobody wants to take credit for it. I think it's a slap in the face to the people who worked on the first ordinance. I don't remember a commissioner meeting where all the commissioners talked about all the different changes to the ordinance. There was no transparency at all about the new ordinance. I think the whole ordinance needs to be rejected outright. If there are amendments that need to be addressed with the original ordinance, then they need to be talked about by the commissioners. I think the commissioners need to look at the financial benefits also to help out for the entire county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joe, I'm going to give you your time, but you only got three minutes. So minute and a half for each topic, please.
We won't start the talk until you get there. But you're a little younger than me, but I know.
Where's Pam? Oh, my neighbor. She can mow yard every day now, so. Okay, listen, I'm Joe Russell, 3501 East 700 North, Eaton, Indiana. Just to recap on the August 12th Plan Commission meeting. Remember the childhood game, hot potato, hot potato, throw it back and forth? That's the way it seemed. It seems like the Plan Commission received a package that they really didn't have any buy-in, top-down maybe. They seemed a bit disinterested because the follow-up discussion didn't address, and they heard it time and time again, the MARTA Moody original ordinance, property value guarantee. I was told there was no discussion of that. And very brief on the 500-foot setback, three key items. They made a lot of little corrections. They voted eight to one. And then we left. So I was, a couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by two more solar companies. Out of the blue. I played dumb like I was interested. And then after a little while, I said, hey, I'm going to tell you what's going on in Delaware County. I explained the setbacks, the property value guarantee. I told them to pass that on to their supervisor and to get back with me. In both cases, they called me back pretty quickly and said that Delaware County is not a place that they can do business. So I'm sure there's a big black X on their map for Delaware County. But I feel sorry for the leaseholders that signed up the original document under the MARTA Moody plan. The reason they did that, I mean, they had choices between to do it or not do it. And they decided that was best for their family, their children, their grandchildren. And I hate, they want to continue the family farm for a couple more generations and that may not happen. The solar offers three to four times the money that they would get by just renting the ground out. So, you know, they felt really good about their decision and that may disappear now. And the property rights guarantee, that works both ways. You know, land on the other side of our farms does impact what we do with our farm. Every farmer would take a farm without houses next to it. But we don't discuss that. We don't ask for changes of ordinance and property guarantees. But it's real. You can ask 100 farmers and they'll all take the property without houses next to it. So what becomes of the poor companies that we've got contracts with now? Good question. Will they walk away and go, you know, just lick their wounds and leave? I don't, they've spent millions of dollars so far. They've got contracts. They're probably worth the money some way, somehow. They're probably trying to figure out how to do that. They could sue the county and maybe get some of their money back. The thing that scares me the most is they could sell out to I&amp;M. They would take over this, these. I&amp;M plays by different rules. I don't think you want to deal with I&amp;M. I think you'd rather deal with the solar companies. But that's a real possibility in my opinion. That's my opinion. So it's always been a word and a handshake is as good as any lawyer-generated document. And all these leaseholders essentially was a, the word and a handshake. And then the county changed the rules in the middle of one of those. And that doesn't play well in rural, the rural parts of the county. We've never done business that way. So I would suggest the four original projects that are out there now to continue under MARTA's rules. And any new solar companies that want to come will buy by whatever you come up with going forward. And that would, that would save a lot of grief and it would reward those leaseholders, the originals, to continue the assets of their farm to their family and grandchildren. You know, I'm in that category. So remember Aesop's Fable? The ant and the grasshopper? This seems to be a classic case. I'm an ant. The leaseholders are ants. Some of the nimmies are grasshoppers. But this is kind of playing out just like that, that fable. See, I forget how it ended. I need to reread it. Anyway, I think we have a real live case. So again, I think that the best solution going forward for everybody is those four original companies will be governed under the contract that they signed at the time. These people maybe wouldn't have signed those original contracts had there been the new rules. I don't know.
That's your time, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I got one other.
Michael Dural?
Morning. Can you hear me? Hello. My name is Michael Dural. I live at 5001 North Weir Drive in Muncie. I want to talk about the amendments to the solar proposal. The setback changes proposed by Commissioner Brand overcomplicate the process and reduce the ability of the community to maximize its ability to create revenue for itself. Even with the landowners having to negotiate with each individual neighbor to potentially bring the setback down to 100 feet, increasing the setbacks would create wasted areas of prime land that could be used to generate revenue. Implementing greater setbacks will cause more farms to be affected, creating a greater need to use more land to get the stated kilowatt per hour goal that these companies are intending to reach. I also find it interesting that in a time when communities are attempting to adapt to the 2025 Senate Bill 1 and find creative ways to generate income to aid in the funding of infrastructure, competitive pay for county employees and resources for the community, individuals are attempting to create roadblocks for a means of more revenue into our community. This is equivalent to a person complaining about being broke but refusing to go out and apply for a job. The only difference is, in this situation, the job is here, banging on our door, trying to hire us. We are just refusing to open the door. What's worse is we are, through our attempts to overcomplicate this ordinance, trying to run the offer off of our stoop. So please, let's not try to be like The Simpsons, Mr. Burns, releasing the hounds of purposeful overcomplications and unnecessary restrictions to chase potential business partners away. Let's keep it simple. Trust that the people who farm their land know that they want to do what they know is best for the land that they have stewardship over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Regan?
Well, we're glad the Ball State is starting their new year and the new freshmen are here. We welcome them to Delaware County. And we also hope they're safe and they enjoy their time here.
Absolutely.
Everybody's safe.
Is that all? Commissioner Brand? Yeah, welcome the Ball State students and just, I hope when they move out, that the landlords take responsibility for the contents of their facilities instead of throwing them out on the sidewalk. You know who has to take care of that? We do, the taxpayers. The Muncie Sanitary District picks that stuff up. I really hope the landlords take note of that. The Justice Center parking lot's now open. It's complete. The stormwater work was done. So looking at the next rain, we'll go out there and take a look and make sure that there's no ponding in front of the walkway. It's all striped and good. Just a reminder that that main south parking lot's visitor parking. It's not employee parking. It's visitor parking. And I get told that the employees don't park there. But it's pretty odd to me that all the visitors go to lunch at the same time. So just a reminder that that's visitor parking, not employee parking. Our next town hall is in Albany. I believe we're going to have that at the Albany Town Hall. That's September 11th at 6 o'clock. So I'll remind everybody again before our next meeting. Also, for the employees of Delaware County, those who have county email, the Know Before training is out for cyber crimes. It's due September 7th. We've made big progress. I think before, the completion rate was somewhere between 25 and 30%. By raising awareness earlier this year, we got it up to, I think, 74%. I personally expect 100%. And I'm going to encourage IT and the department heads to disable people's access if they don't complete it by September 7th. We do have a small structure being worked on. This is State Road 32 East going out towards Selma. It's about a mile off of the bypass. It's a 100-foot culvert that goes underneath 32 there. It's going to, it affects all four lanes. They were going to have a detour go through Country Club Road and down the county roads, but in working with NDOT, I believe we have it now where they're not going to require a detour. And we'll be able to use the emergency lanes on the side, so they're going to just do part of it, so it won't be a full closure. That was the Stage Two plan as I knew it last week. If it changes, I'll let you guys know. 12th Street Bridge out by the bypass, that should be fully open by Thursday this week. There will be some restrictions tomorrow, maybe even at times some full closure while they finish up a few things. Also, the Highway Department, we're working on a pretty significant guardrail project out on 600 West. This is south of State Road 67. There's a great big open ditch out there. And we're going to improve that guardrail going out that way. And the Health Department, I don't know if Jamie's still here, has a diaper drive going on throughout the county. And there are boxes throughout the county building, the Justice Center, and I believe the Health Department, collecting wipes and diapers for those who need it. That's all.
All right, entertain a motion for recess?
So moved.
Second.
Motion recess on a second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.